Really. Wait, this is.
That one resolution before our executive session so that the executive session was dead last.
The last night. Yeah. I think there's a few things before that. There's like. Just makes sense. There's four items after the executives.
Yeah, I prefer in the future, it's those could always be at the end, you know, or at the very beginning, you know.
So I take that. Thank you.
Number twenty.
Okay. Twenty. So we can skip those.
And skip these three into twenty one, twenty two, twenty three.
Skip these. Yes.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Okay. So seventeen, I'll go to green one. Hey, got it.
Okay, all rise. All right with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one way nation under our end of this world with liberty and justice. Where's their friendship?
Dear God, thank you for giving us the honor and the privilege of serving you through our capacities as commissioners. Give us the grace and the wisdom to be able to conduct this meeting in a manner which is serving to you, Lord, and give us the the wisdom to make decisions that you would want us to make. Thank you for being our Lord, our Savior, and for giving us all the strength that we need in order to get by every day and for your grace and mercy in Jesus' name, amen.
Hey, welcome everyone. We will not have a workshop next week. We have the ribbon cutting at the fairgrounds next Tuesday. And then we have a regular commissioners meeting next Wednesday at the fairgrounds of the historical centennial stage, July twelfth at ten thirty AM. All of the public is invited. We've also invited department heads that you can meet with. If you have issues concerning the county, be good place to come together as a community and celebrate Trumbull County. So that's next Wednesday at ten thirty and again, the ribbon cutting as it is at ten on Tuesday, also in the same area. So.
I still, I still want to have a meeting that day. Are you not having anything?
We we are not. We're gonna, we looked at Monday, but it didn't fit with a lot of schedules. So we, myself and Mr. Commissioner Cantal Mesa are not able to have the the public meeting we usually have. If you'd like to have your meeting, that's that's fine. It's up to you.
I'd like to see if I can get the agenda the tomorrow if that's possible. Agenda. You haven't started the agenda yet.
I haven't seen any emails for next week's agenda yet myself either. I have feeling it's gonna be pretty light agenda tomorrow.
Agenda yet, ma'am. No, I'm still.
Send in their items by yesterday or by today.
By today, yes.
Okay, so as soon as we get them, if you could. So that I could see how much time I'll need to go through them. It might be a light week.
It it seemed from the meeting here we had yesterday with the department heads, there's very little for next week.
Okay.
And then it was kind of a consensus of department heads that they didn't have much they were going to present. So it's a week, Commissioner Kinnaman, so I decided for our meeting, at least we we were not going to be able to do that.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Miss Frenchco.
Here.
Mister Malloy.
Here.
Item number one to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three and accept and approve the video recording of the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three commissioners' regular meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
No, because I believe that we still need to have them. We still need to have them written, especially for the purpose of making sure that our legal counsel can verify that for ARPA that the decisions were made to request her opinions, because if not, every action this tape can be reversed.
Item number two to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four to transfer appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Only because domestic relations and adult probation hasn't sent anything. No.
Item number five to approve the fiscal years twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, community-based corrections programs, subsidy grant agreement in the amount of one million, three hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred thirty six dollars and TCAP in the amount of one million, two hundred twenty seven thousand, three hundred thirty three dollars to be paid in eight equal installments of three hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred fifty eight dollars and sixty three cents, one hundred sixty four thousand, seven hundred forty two dollars will be for the CCA and one hundred fifty three thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars and sixty three cents in TCAP. The grant is effective for the term commencing July one, twenty twenty three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
A motion approved.
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six, the Trumbull County Planning Commission is requesting the Board of Commissioners to authorize change order number two for a net reduction of nine hundred ninety one dollars and sixty six cents, changing the total contract amount from fifty thousand, six hundred fifty one dollars, seventeen cents to forty nine thousand, six hundred fifty nine dollars and fifty one cents for the contract with Arcatis Engineering Services USA Incorporated. And also to authorize President Denny Malloy to sign change order number two.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number seven, to execute a partial easement release between Trumbull County and Walmart Stores East LP to release a portion of Trumbull County's interest in an existing permanent sanitary sewer easement is no longer necessary.
Motion approved.
Second.
Was there a permit? I was waiting to see the permit so that the work that was done.
I emailed the news morning.
Of this morning. Okay.
That was Scott. Partner from the Sanitary Engineers.
Okay, Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Yes.
Excuse me. Item number eight to approve change order number eight with Thomas Construction Incorporated. And this is for the Brookfield Wastewater Treatment Plant Capital Improvement Project, known as County Project Number Two S thirteen located in Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District Metropolitan Subdistrict Brookfield Township in the amount of seventy one thousand, six hundred seventy seven dollars and ten cents. This is revises the total contract amount to seventeen million, seven hundred seven thousand, five hundred ninety two dollars and fifty one cents.
A motion approved.
Second.
Discussion about this item. So yesterday I was I this is a seventy one thousand dollar change order that the commissioners didn't know about until yesterday. The work for all these change orders has already taken place back as far as nine months ago. And it was internally approved by the department head. However, change orders need to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. We don't have a policy in place that allows them to do to approve change orders without the commissioners approving them. And I don't like two things largely about this. One, as I was told yesterday by sanitary engineer staff that this was already approved by the prosecutor's office, and it absolutely was not. We all got an email back thing that they were CC'd, the prosecutor's office was CC'd when the agenda my agenda item was sent over. And that is a far cry from actually being approved as to form process and correctness. And the other thing is that they, and this was a quote, they let them build up. And then they bring them to the board to sign off on them. So they let seventy one thousand dollars worth of change orders build up over the, I mean, that's the amount of, you know, a contract, really, not this one, but without bringing him to the board, letting the board know what was going on and had the work done. And then they come to us after the fact, not how several months later and ask for approval. And that is a faulty process that we should improve. The, we definitely need to make sure that our prosecutor's office is looking at these things. Because one of the, one of the items, item number three, it says during construction, the contractor encountered fuel surcharge charges for concrete deliveries related to pandemic and market issues which were not anticipated. The owner, meaning the county, agreed to help offset the cost by paying half of the cost incurred related to fuel surcharges. And I don't know that that's allowable in the contract. I don't know if there's, we don't know as a board of commissioners, if there's an escalation clause. We we that's not something that is normally adjusted for. And if we are going to give one contractor half of their fuel charges as it relates to a county contract, and will other ones come and and ask for the same thing? I want to see us actually develop a a policy for approving and processing change orders so that this type of thing doesn't happen again. What if one of these things was glaringly wrong? Which I I question that that item. And then we end up within litigation because the department decided to have work done before the prosecutor approved it to correctness and form. We need to do things, even though this is how it's always been done, that doesn't mean that it's the best way or it's the proper way. And I'd like the Board of Commissioners to develop a process so that change orders get sent for approval before we sign off of them, sign off on them. And if you look at our other departments such as building and when they were renovating the Board of Elections, Mike Slawinski did a fantastic job with those change orders and would bring them to us before the contractor would do them, because that's how it should be done, because they don't have the authority to approve things. It wasn't it wasn't just the the final. Sometimes at the end of a contract, you have the a little more discretion when you're finalizing things, but how this happened was not okay, and we need to have a better process.
I agree, there could be something better with this, but when you're looking at this, this one, and which is the matter at hand now. They were less than four percent off of a seventeen million dollar contract. And and if you're going to make changes like that, I would consider less than four percent minimal with the big scope of what's done. And if we did have a policy, I would probably ask that it was going to be a change of ten percent or more probably. So at four percent, I wouldn't even see this falling in anything that I would that I would change. This is tying up loose ends at the end. We're paying the bills. We're collectively squaring everything up so we can move on to this project on the next one. So of course, at the end, you're going to have the settlements of what do we need to change? What changed here? What changed there? There was a lot of negotiation back and forth that we don't see in this cost and where they were eaten by the contractor above and beyond what these were. So I feel at this point, he said seventy one thousand out of seventeen million. I I think that's in any contract of that magnitude or size, we've already seen the Virgin Diamond change a couple of times. We haven't even put a shovel to the ground yet. I I think this is pretty pretty good effort on their part. They they estimated pretty good where they needed to be at that price.
I think you're missing the concept. It it doesn't, and I'll explain it more clearly.
Well, I I just don't want to tie up the prosecutor's time, looking at every little thing that comes in a four thousand dollars here. We're changing this for twelve hundred. We're changing this for three thousand. There's fifteen changes on here, and most of them are under five thousand dollars.
The concept, the Board of Commissioners are the ones who have the only ones who have the statutory authority to sign off on change orders, not the department head. So if we want to do things correctly, the Board of Commissioners needs to be signing off on them.
That's what we're doing now. That's what this is on the agenda for.
The some of these changes, all of these changes have already taken place.
Right, but we are approving them right now. This is the beginning of this this agenda item is to approve the change order.
I understand.
And if you don't want to prove it, you can not approve it. And then we deal with it in a different way.
I understand you're new to government, but there's a proper way and an improper way, and the way they've always done it is not the is not a best practice. You don't wait nine months, let work get done and so things build up and then bring them in for approval to rubber stamp after the fact. We need to do this in a better way. We need to protect the county and we, that's our job. We we don't. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I I was just gonna say, if you need to do it in a better way or or more, you know, I guess, cost effective way. I mean, you have a seventeen million dollar project with enormous amounts of change orders that come along with a project like capital improvement project like this. I mean, it's not unheard of, number one, to see these types of change orders. Number two, if you were to stop at every, if you were to stop the project and wait for our approval for every one of these change orders, time is money.
It never stops.
This would never get done. This would be double or triple the time it would normally take.
That's not what I.
And you wait, hold on. And you mentioned Mike Slawinski in the in the building department. It's not comparing apples to apples. This is a capital improvement project worth seventeen million dollars. It's going to benefit thousands of households. It's imperative that we get this done in a timely manner, because if not, we're really going to be.
No one's talking about that. No, what I'm saying is.
When do you, so we're gonna stop all the change orders?
What I'm saying is, as soon as there's a change order, send, send it over. You identify it and you can.
So they're supposed to stop work.
No, I'm if you see that usually it's not something that's right at the immediate time.
How do you know?
If it is, if it is, even if it is, you put it on the next agenda. You do not wait nine months for things to build up and not.
And in the meantime, in the meantime, we've hired an engineering consultant. We have an entire engineering crew here who works with the contractor who negotiates these change orders. And all of a sudden, now you're going to sit here and micromanage them and know nothing about the technical aspects of it.
They've added, they've added, I know about the administrative aspects of it, and they've added staff.
And by the way, when you said the prosecutor's office said that we need to have a legal opinion, they do not say that, and I can print that for you and for the media. They said that the administrat, it's an administrative matter that should be discussed with the board beforehand before it comes to them, and that's in writing.
What I know what.
With two commissioners sending it forward.
Came over and said that it was already approved.
Yeah, come up to come up to the mic.
You said it was already approved, and then I asked you for additional questions, and there was someone in the in my office when you said that.
All I know, when I send these gen items over, particularly on change orders, it involves the prosecutor's approval, I said it, I copied them on. What they do with it from that point to this meeting, I don't know.
They tell us what they do. They expect us to discuss it administratively, and if there's a question, two commissioners will submit for an opinion. That's not what she's saying.
That that's completely, seeing someone is not getting it approved. And so for you to say that it was.
They said we're not supposed to get it approved until we discuss it.
Feel I'm directed to do it another different manner. I will. At this time, I have none.
Okay, I'd like to ask that the board instruct our staff everywhere that when change orders come up, they they put them on the agenda right away. If it's an emergency that you can't stop the work, you know, you have to keep going, even still, put that on the agenda the next week. We do not need to wait nine months for 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 fifteen or however many change orders to to come up.
Disagree.
Because then at that point.
I disagree too. I I don't think, I don't think they even know sometimes by the time billing comes in from all these different contractors.
And they do know.
Suppliers and everything else to come in.
They do know. And if you actually reviewed this package, you would see that they've known, look, this is something that has every change order that was on there, and you can see the dates on them. So they do have the ability to let us know as they're coming in. And as the the consulting engineer sees problems or the contractor sees problems, those should be brought to the commissioner's attention, not just waiting for fifteen of them to build up. And the other one that we should have talked about is if there's no escalation clause for the cost relative to fuel increases, you don't just say, okay, we're going to split your fuel costs with you. That's unheard of. I have not seen that in government in my entire life.
I think whatever is deemed reasonable and necessary for the project to move forward, yes, whatever's the reason, that's that's your, that's your opinion. My opinion is something different. That's why we're discussing this in a public meeting. It's an administrative decision. What is unreasonable, what is unreasonable, commissioners holding this project up another two or three years, because you want to talk about change orders of ten thousand dollars on a seventeen million dollar project, which is going to benefit
No one's holding.
Thousands of families in Trumbull County.
Saying that the process needs to be better.
We fundamentally disagree. I'm sorry.
And I believe has been.
Status quo will be the.
Here we go. Here we go.
And I believe, as has been the pattern since January, this is an opportunity to grandstand and take a pot shot at the sanitary engineers office and its staff that's working awful hard for us. Let's move on from this.
Just real quick, the staff, the staff that is this, this project is under the engineering estimate as mentioned by Commissioner Mulloy, that this staff has done wonders as far as sanitary sewer water improvement. I am, I'm I'm defending the staff.
This is another chance to to knock them down.
Since I've been here, seventy million dollars.
Not improving processes, and neither of you two want to do that.
It's about the proof. It's in the pudding.
You want to rubber stamp everything without having any oversight.
Successful, and you've tried at every turn to bring it down, and I don't understand why.
Tell me another contractor who's gotten their fuel costs covered in a change order. Tell me one other that's done that.
Do you, do you know that those are negotiated between the engineering consultant, our board and the contractor for the best price possible? That's what we do.
That's not.
You come here and at the end and point fingers at people.
Where was that?
You want it, you want it.
Original contract.
You want to not hire the engineering consultant? You want to not hire the engineering consultant? You go out there and be the engineering consultant.
So is that what we're doing? Or let it, we're we're reimbursing contractors for their cost of their fuel too. Okay, that's absurd.
Order states, this was split between the county and the contractor. That was part of our negotiation process.
That's right.
As were the other fifteen.
Was that originally on the contract that we would be covering that? Or is that a cost of their business and doing?
Every nut and bolt isn't on the contract either.
Shouldn't, it shouldn't be.
Hope that our engineering consultant would have.
Let's just, let's just buy a.
That's who we pay. That's who we paid. That's who we all voted on.
We need an extra vehicle to do our job. Let's let's.
That's getting out of line. That's getting preposterous there.
Exactly. So is by paying for their gas. It's a cost of doing business. Imagine if the people who put in the floor or our carpet said, hey, you know, gas was high. Can we have extra?
You don't know the circumstance. Maybe they said, we can't get the gas here too. It's going to be this price. If we have to delay it or if we have to wait, or you have to go get it yourself, and they negotiated the best.
Okay.
You don't know that.
I'm done with discussion. It's time for the rubber stamp.
Playing on your quarterback is awful easy after the fact.
Well, we, none of us knew about it, and that's a flawed process. If the commissioners don't know about a seventy thousand dollar change order.
I don't want to know. I don't want to know about a fuel thing on a seventy one mil or seventeen million dollar project. If I'll leave it up.
Then that's why we have engineering.
Process. No, I said it's a flawed process when the commissioners don't know about a seventy one thousand dollar change order until the day before the meeting, they're expected to vote on it. And all the work has already been done.
Not true. I fundamentally disagree. It's reasonable and necessary.
Let's move on. Thank you, Scott.
And 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 under the engineer's estimate, let's not forget that. It's coming in under cost. Yes. All this, you're not seeing the forest for the trees here.
That has nothing to do with improving processes.
Has to do with saving money on the bottom line.
Has nothing to do with.
Okay, guys, let's move on. Let's take the vote.
That you can comprehend what I'm trying to explain.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Because it hasn't been approved and been brought up to the commissioners until yesterday. And I'd like to have further discussion on this. No. Oh, yes. Also, the original signage scheduled for the project was incomplete at the time of bidding.
I I think you're scaring business away from Trumbull County. We're going to get a lot of business to say, I don't want to do business.
There's going to be a lot of contractors that are going to do this.
I I don't want to do business. That's the way they're going to manage things. Let's go to another county. And then we're going to be stuck paying top dollar when people don't want to work with us.
Item number nine.
Do things the right way.
To approve the personnel action for the employment of Mister Robert Perry for the position of custodian with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective July twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, pay range three, zero years is fourteen dollars and ten cents. And this is from pursuant to an authorized job posting from April nineteenth to the twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. This actions per the Human Resources Department and Sanitary Engineers Department.
Motion approved.
Second.
Um, I have a question. Was that actually advertised or are they just sending them over to the editor? Because there's no proof of that. And I think that like be way before you were here, I was having this conversation with Steve Charles and everyone else in public meetings. I said, we don't just toss something over the fence and hope it was caught. We should have like, you know how you do an advertisement for our bidding or an RFP, you have to get you go and you clip it to make sure that it happened, that it happened. Is it happening?
So here's what I can tell you. I can tell you that I reached out to Marley Riker, which I gave to all the commissioners to say that that is who I confirmed. As soon as I came on board, you had asked that question, and I went directly to the source. I said, you've been on our distribution list. Sorry, this is Alex Stephen Genze Bush, Human Resources. I said, you are a contact. You've been the contact. Is this considered the person that we're supposed to reach out to? Yes, please keep sending me the job postings. We pay three hundred and twenty nine dollars to be part of the Tribune's Job Network.
Okay.
Okay, so what that does is that puts us out on all their social media sites, on their Facebook, whatever the case may be, whatever social media sites they have. I do want to stress, though, to the commission, to the board in general, a classified ad costs thirteen hundred dollars every time. So the problem is, is that, to be quite honest with you, when we get a request for a classified ad, I'm going to tell you, we did thirty jobs, I'm sorry, excuse me, ten job postings. I just went and checked before I came here. Ten job postings in the last thirty days. If we did a classified ad for each job posting, we'd be at thirteen thousand dollars. So if we want to do that as a board, I need to have consensus, because that's a lot of money, and we don't have that in our budget.
To make sure that it's advertised with them, and it's not just going to a random person who.
Nope.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for.
Yeah, I I mean, it goes to everybody, N W A C P, the greater, I mean ministries, we send it to everybody and anybody.
That they're actually advertising it that, and you found that out.
Yes, we pay three hundred and twenty nine dollars for the job network is what it's called.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number ten to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Mister Robert Dillard from the position of sewer line maintenance assistant. That's a pay range four, eighteen years is twenty dollars and forty four cents an hour to the position of labor, pay range three, eighteen years, and that'll be eighteen dollars and ninety two cents an hour with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department. That'll be effective Friday, July seventh, twenty twenty three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eleven to approve a school resource officer agreement by and between the Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County Sheriff Paul S Monroe and the Bristol Local School District Board of Education for the police protection and services for the Bristol Local School District, its buildings and activities, personnel, students and public onsite for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four academic fiscal school year. That's July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The Bristol Local School District agrees to pay Trumbull County Sheriff's Office sixty three thousand, five hundred, seventy eight dollars and fifty eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Uh, only because when I was looking at the contract, there were some areas where it looked like there wasn't certainty that the sheriff's department's costs were actually fully covered by the amount being charged, and they are having such financial difficulties.
Elaborate which ones, which ones weren't fully charged that you saw.
I just voted and asserted my reason for my no vote.
Because it's something looked like it wasn't fully charged, but you don't know what it was. It was wasn't. It's just a stab of the sheriff's department, or is there facts behind it?
Discussion's over.
Okay, I think we'd public and judge.
Okay.
Okay, item number twelve to. Hey, item number twelve, to grant the right of way permits to the companies listed. They are Dominion East Ohio ASW Pipeline LLC, Northeast Ohio Natural Gas Corporation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirteen, to authorize a Trumbull County engineer to revise a legal weight limit on highway structures listed. This is for Southington number twenty six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sir Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Sir Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number fourteen, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineers Department to approve and execute the memorandum of understanding between the City of Niles and Trumbull County for the resurfacing of Heaton North Road between US four twenty two and State Route one sixty nine. Uh, the the referenced MOU was prepared by the City of Niles Law Department. Uh, the participation is estimated to be uh, twelve thousand five hundred forty eight dollars and sixty seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fifteen, to award the lowest and best proposal submitted by Crosby Mook Incorporated. And that's to lease a Toshiba E Studio. This is a four, seven, eight S model for the coroner's office and that is at forty one dollars and eighty five cents per month. The other proposals uh, they sought were Team Office Technologies at forty two dollars a month and Rico at fifty eight dollars and seventy five cents per month.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because in my packet, there was no RFP. There was, and I sent a question to find out about pre-award contact uh, and had nothing except for the agenda item. And I see that it's just pennies off. I I just, I have to vote no because I wanted to be able to see more to make sure that it was a proper process. There wasn't um, a grid or anything like that. It's just I'd like to know that our bidding processes for the county were done correctly and I didn't see anything supporting that. No.
Item number sixteen, to appoint Ms. Laura Dmitrovic, uh, Trumbull County Family and Children First Coordinator to serve as director, as director of youth programs on the Ohio Children's Trust Fund Regional Prevention Council for a two-year term commencing on July twentieth, twenty twenty three through July nineteenth, twenty twenty five. And this is pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section three, one zero nine point one seven two. Uh, Ms. Dmitrovich uh, can be reappointed for two consecutive terms.
We can make a motion to.
Going to make a motion to approve.
Oh. I want to, okay, go ahead.
I did.
Second.
There's discussion. Just wanted to point out to the board that this individual has not applied to be on the board. She was recommended by someone else, but there's no actual application from this individual in the packet. And I think that uh, I also like to see that this, that these were advertised. So I think that we should table this to to look at the advertising and to find out all applica-, get a copy of all applications because there was no application from this individual. I have a copy of it. If you want to see, it was a letter of recommendation from someone else without an application.
I also saw her um, credentials. She's very well qualified.
She she absolutely is, but at the same time, you want to make sure that the individual themselves actually applies. So I think that it won't hurt to table this until next week. It could be a short item on our fair agenda, just to make sure that we obtain uh, an application from the person who is on here.
I'm ready to proceed with the vote.
Um, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Only because she hasn't applied, but no.
Item number seventeen, to reject all bids and authorize the clerk of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to readvertise for bids that would accommodate the Trumbull County Board of Elections with the printing of optical scan paper ballot pages. Uh, the funds to be obligated shall be paid from the Trumbull County Board of Elections Budget Years twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. Um, note, readvertising is to resolve a possible bid irregularity found within the bid specifications.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And discussion, it's not a possible bid of regularity. It was an actual bidding irregularity. And this is the reason why since I started as commissioner, I've been wanting to do policies and procedures with flow charts for every process that the commissioners do. It costs money every time we have to readvertise and uh, the entity that was listed, which is the Board of Commissioners, had our staff communicating back and forth with the individual who who was bidding. That is completely uh, an unlawful process and it occurred and it shouldn't have occurred i- in our office and we need to make sure that we have a po- policies in place so that we have a proper process and everyone knows how this works and what can be done and can't be done. Because now this is um, a bad situation, so. And if it wasn't caught, then we probably would have been sued because it's a, it's a bidding irregularity, so.
No, I I disagree. We had a long talk with this yesterday uh, with the Board of Elections Deputy Director. Uh, this was a communications thing and they did communicate with our staff over communication when they couldn't get a hold of the Board of Elections because uh, nothing more than timing and vacation and people not being in the office. So out of fairness to be to everybody in the process, we decided to redo this thing, but it wasn't by any fault of anyone in our office or in their office. It was more of a timing type of thing. When the deadline came in, there was someone that wanted to bid that couldn't get the questions answered uh, that they wanted to get. They did ask our office and our office did not give them the answer. Uh, they just gave them information uh, on on who to contact with that. And it went back and forth and we felt that this person was slighted by the system and the process and that's why we wanted to reopen the bids up.
That's actually incorrect. Our clerk should have known that they do not have full-on conversations about anything with a bidder and and say, call me later to discuss. There is an entire long-page email that was put out or there were and and there was communication be- between our office, the Board of Commissioners and a bidder and our office, I believe was at fault and that that shouldn't happen.
Can you please speak?
We need to improve again our process. Again, the first meeting of the year, I talked about making sure that our office had policy and procedures and both of you voted no on it. Now we have to rebid. Here's a classic example of why we need.
All season procedures would not have prevented this here. If they weren't there when someone wanted a question, they weren't, they they weren't there.
Yeah, SOPs and a flow chart. Sorry, I got a military background. That's how things should be.
Adrian, would you like to approach? And state your name and title too, please.
Adrian McCavitch, Deputy Director with Board of Elections. Commissioner, I believe what you're speaking to, we do have a procedure. We send all the questions that your office receives is so that they direct it to either us if it's election-related or the procedure in bidding. And then we sent it to the prosecutor, the email that you read. Then we forwarded to our prosecutor for approval of it for an explanation that is sent to every other vendor that they have the same opportunity. This particular reason why we're doing this is because both directors were at conference. A vendor called the day before it was due. We were not able to answer it, called our office three times in one day where we, our staff asked him to please call the commissioner's office. There could have been a possibility. We don't even know the question that was being asked. And this way, we even changed language approved by the prosecutor so that this would never be undertaken. But the first one that I think your concern was was handled the exact way in the procedures. It was related to our office. We sent it to the prosecutor's office and it was sent back so that she could send out to answer to all the other vendors.
My concern is not about your board, you, you're on a, your bosses are a board that we have no jurisdiction over. We, as commissioners, have jurisdiction over our staff and our policies and our processes and our procedures that are not written and should be. So this is not, nothing, nothing I said has anything to do with you. I just wanted to clarify that. I think that we made them a mistake and it could have, it would have been prevented and that we should have handled it differently, so.
The vendor that we're speaking about though, was not the first vendor that sent the question. This vendor, and we're just trying to be open and fair and giving him the opportunity to bid on the job.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Clerk, did you have something to add?
I did. Um, the bid specs had said, uh, the problem was, they said, if there's any question, the bid had to be answered by somebody in the Board of Elections Office, which has been changed now to read the Board of Commissioners. As soon as I saw the chain of emails, I asked the gentleman to call me. Bidders have, they can ask us questions. We ask them to put it in writing. What we do is we provide a question and an answer and we go through every bidder that's taken out a question and the answer and we send it to everybody because fair bidding is very important to us. So we had Mr. Toth, uh, Alex Stephen Genzi, the HR Director was in my office. I stayed after to speak with this gentleman and I simply told him, thank you for your interest in Trumbull County. I took his uh, question or problem to ed- to and sent it immediately to Mr. Danzo and Mr. Toth and they wrote back to the board, but I didn't, um, we did change the onus should be on the Board of Commissioners. As if we would have got the question, we send it directly to the prosecutor's office, but we do send the answer to everyone who took out a bid, so I just wanted to explain.
Okay.
Myself. Thank you.
So um, ensuring that our process doesn't involve any verbal communication should be documented. So the whole process needs to be, and we need to have it written out, standard procedures relative to bidding. Again, we don't have that. There should be no verbal communication. Period.
Name and title, please.
I'm going to get better at that. Alex Stephen Genzi Bush, Human Resources. So my concern about that, my only concern is Paula did get a call. It was very late in the afternoon. The gentleman was very upset. She did not give him any answers. She simply said, you know, this would have to be something that's decided by our prosecutor's office. I don't have the answers for you, sir. But with that being said, I am concerned with the language being changed for our department heads in general to defer them back to the commissioner's office because it would, how are they supposed to answer is my question then. If if you don't want them to have any verbal conversations or it, why are we deflecting back to the commissioner's office if she's not capable or or they're not the right people, right? To to answer these questions. I mean, that's a, that to me is the the larger issue here, not the fact that he called. Um, but he did also call just to, I will tell you, he called at four, it was like four fifty the day before the bid opening. I mean, so he was extremely late with that being said, you know, and was having different issues. But with that being said, my concern is now that I keep hearing we're changing the language to be, it goes to the commissioner's office. Who's answering those questions then?
That's the problem. Uh, no one to this point, this is twenty twenty three and up until now, this is the first time we're having a conversation to identify a process that will prevent pre-award uh, contact and help get appropriate questions resolved. And I, and and this should be something that, you know, an an administrator would take care of or in a policy would, it would fit into a policy on how we do things.
Okay.
I I also believe it should go to the, I mean, just my opinion, it should go to the entity, everything should be in writing and it should go probably to the individual who can answer the.
I I have to agree. I I mean, it's not fair to Paula to know what what the bid speculations were for for voting material. I mean, I don't, I'm sorry. I don't mean to. But from an HR process perspective, this is very hairy, you know, like and it's muddied and and of course, there's going to be issues when things aren't clear. Um, and I think that's what we're seeing here.
Agree with that. I think that it should go, because there are technical, imagine if it's an engineering question. What is our staff?
Well, and that's why I came up here because I just got so lucky that it was late. Paula was still here. I noticed her door was open. So I walked in. I always make sure that everybody gets out of here pretty safely. So I walked in and I got to overhear the conversation, which was, which was great because I could hear the frustrations in the process. But I'm just saying, as a board, we need to figure out how we, how we fix that because we can't really put the ownership back on her or Adria until we figure out what we want it to be or how it should be.
Th- there's never been anything written and I think it's time, past time that we actually do that.
Okay, so.
You know.
I'd like to say it's often what's reasonable. We do work with our prosecutor's office. We would work with the Board of Elections. It's our job to give that bidder every effort to answer their question. So if Ms. Adria knew it, but the prosecutor's office would also be copied on that. We've had it happen several times where we have a lot of questions and answers and it's our job to make sure it's faxed. We get faxed. We fax the answers back to every bidder who took out the question. We do direct our staff uh, to say, do not answer any questions on the phone.
Which I can attest, no questions were answered. So I'm just saying.
I propose that we develop a bidding policy that's countywide uh, so that our our staff and and no other, we were the, we do, we're the contracting body for the county and there is no formal uh, procedure or process. And I'd like to see something in writing that's uniform so that moving forward, there is never a situation like this again. And and I'd be willing to help help with that. And and then those at the departments who, you know, our clerk should be participating in our staff and developing that.
But we did, we did set back in in March, we gave one year to do policy.
And that we should have um, again, our clerk, other department heads and other bodies that are participating in that, work on that. I understand that a long, a while ago, people have a year uh, that they decided to develop things. But I've been trying to accomplish this since I took office and this is an, this is something that could be done in probably a week or two. And this is a major, major policy that's been absent and should be here. So I think that at least getting that one done would be beneficial to the entire county.
Your commissioner, why don't you write it? If it can be done in a week, that's all yours. We'll see in a week. If we have a new policy on all this stuff, if you want to volunteer to do that.
When I received the.
I mean, you want to push the work to someone else or do you want to do it? I think that's fair. If it could be done in a week.
I have had enough of you, your misogyny where you actually.
You just said it can be done in a week.
It can be. I'm not.
Department heads. Why don't we get it done in a week then?
So.
Volunteer to do it.
Clerk is the one who's been handling it. I'd like to see if the clerk can, uh, I'd like to and ask and instruct the clerk to obtain samples of the policies that other communities use so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
I think.
CCAO would probably be a good asset and a resource.
I think our prosecutor's office also is very versed with this. I mean, we've been doing this for over nineteen years and we do run our bid smoothly, but sometimes when a bidder has something coming late, uh, the bid spec said you, they could only reach out to the Board of Elections. I had no notice. They didn't reach out to me. As soon as somebody forwarded me the email to the commissioners, I I got involved.
Past that now, we're talking about a solution and I think that if we look at how it it recommendations from CCAO or the prosecutor's office on how to craft a, there, there's probably.
And it may be a very simple answer and this is Human Resources again, Alex. I guess I'm agreeing, I'm in agreement with Paula on, I guess I am. It sounds to me like a lot of this should default back to our prosecutor's office. And and that's why I'm just a little bit confused why, you know, we're all over the place when really we have one entity that we that we have that that's responsible for that, you know.
No, but at the same time, they say.
Maybe we can work with them to.
This is administrative and and we're, because we don't have an administrator and every, this is a.
We have three administrators sitting right in front of the public right now. Three.
Okay, so, so we need to develop something. And when I've gone and talked to Bill about a a host of issues uh, that are problematic in in our county, um, we need to have those, he always says you need to develop that as administrators. It needs to, we need to have administrative policies and we don't have them. So a lot of mistakes happen and and missteps because of that. They they don't develop policies. They tell you if something is right or wrong.
So we shouldn't develop those policies with our, with our prosecutors?
That's what I'm saying. So if we were to develop a policy to. That's what I'm saying. So if we were to develop a policy today, my question right now for the board, and I'm just going to put it as simple as I can put this.
Ask them if they.
Would it be to defer back to the prosecutors for any questions pertaining to bids or irregularities or whatever the case may be? Would that, thank you. That, that's what I'm looking for.
We should include them in drafting whatever we come up with.
Okay. Cause I keep hearing it said commissioner's office, then it said their office and then that, that's an issue. So if we just defer back to who the person is, I think we would get a better result is my thought process on that.
Move it forward.
Item number seventeen, Mr. Cantal Mesa to.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item, okay, I'm going to skip everyone. I'm going to skip from number seventeen and I'm going to go to twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and then the board will go back to executive session. So we will go to item number twenty-one and that's to accept the resignation of Mr. James Hecker from his position of drafts person with the county, uh, sanitary engineers department effective July twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, his resignation letter shall be recorded on the journal for record purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, to approve the hiring of Samantha Welker to full-time position of telecommunicator uh, with the Trumbull County nine-one-one department effective Sunday, July ninth, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Welker will be paid seventeen dollars and two cents per hour based on current contract language. Uh, she will serve a one hundred eighty-day probationary period and has passed a pre-employment exam, background check and skills and assessment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, yes, I'd also like to, um, add that I'd like to see a grid like they do in sanitary and GFS. I appreciate that things are sent over with, um, an itemized background, but I, I'd like to see it in a different format, um, much like the other Bob Myrano and, um, someone at JFS does. And I have had about three people ask about, one of them last week about working at, at the um, nine-one-one center, but looking part-time. And so there's no, but there's no ability to work part-time and this is about the third time it's come up. And if that were allowed, I, I think that would help, you know, it's, it was someone who is well-educated, ha, you know, has a wealth of experience, but they said that they could only do part-time. And I said, oh, I don't think that that's allowable there, but it would help alleviate the overtime and the, the costs. And I, but it, there's a contract issues, I'm sure, but I just wanted to bring that up that there's been three times I've been asked now, including this last one about, um, part-time work.
Alex Steven Genzi Bush, the part-time is actually acknowledged in the contract. So the OPBA nine-one-one sheriff's, uh, does have, uh, part-time allowable. Yes. Um, we currently don't have any at nine-one-one. We lost our two part-time workers about a month or two back. Uh, the only caveat is, and I will stress this to you, part-time is hard to find in nine-one-one and it's for this reason only. They still, yes, they can be part-time, but they still have to be available to all three shifts. That's usually where we get the problem. So what I'm hearing is is yes, I want to be part-time, but I only want to work the day shift. That's not an option at nine-one-one. You have to be available to work all three shifts, unfortunately. Yeah. So part-time is available. It's in the contract. Um, that's not the issue. The issue is, is that you have to be available part-time on any shift, any time of the day.
Maybe looking at that in the future so that it's not. Uh, because the other thing is if you're part-time, you're not getting benefits, you're not getting anything.
Yeah.
At least.
They don't get benefits.
On this shift because this person is a, is an educator too and does.
They usually use them as a float is what they do. So that's why it's so important if somebody calls off, they usually go first to the part-timer to call them and see if they can cover a midnight shift or an afternoon shift. The shift that, to be quite frank with you, nobody really wants to work. So that's the, that's the hard time about part-time work. Also.
That's a difficult thing about a twenty-four hour.
Correct. Yeah. And with it being union too, we, we can't just say we're hiring part-time for day turn. We'd be screwing over no pun intended, all of the other people who have seniority who want to bid back to that premium shift, if you will. So that, that's, that's the holistic thing there.
Item number twenty-three, to adopt a resolution recognizing the twenty twenty-three Trumbull County four-H youth club members and adult volunteers. The Trumbull County four-H program has five hundred twenty-five outstanding four-H members that spend countless hours, uh, running their own meetings, electing officers, voting on certain issues and organize their own fundraisers. The Board of Commissioners takes great pride in recognizing the achievements of the four-H youth and the ninety-three trained adult volunteers who spend countless of hours mentoring and educating these young adults. The Board of Commissioners urges all citizens of Trumbull County to support the efforts of these young people who are the future of Trumbull County and the board will present this resolution at the Trumbull County Fair.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, and we'll still put that on, uh, for next week, just this gives us the ability to sign it and have it in a mat so it's ready to present.
I think that's what we're doing now. So we'll have it and already signed and ready to go and framed nicely.
Okay.
And we'll go to number eighteen, Commissioner, if you could read.
Okay, entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised code one-two-one dot two-two G four. Preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations and the collective bargaining strategy for the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office. Make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised code one-twenty-one dot twenty-two G four, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations in the collective bargaining strategy for the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Should be back shortly.
Is this it? No.
For the good of Trumbull County.
Paul needs to come back.
We are no longer in executive session.
Thank you so much. Make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to Ohio revised code one twenty-one dot twenty-two G four. Preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations and the collective bargaining strategy for the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty.
The last one is approval.
Right.
Number twenty?
Yes.
Yeah. To approve the fact finding report findings and recommendations issued by Daniel G Zeiser Esquire Fact Finder on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, including alternative agreements incorporated therein. By reference pertaining to the collective bargaining unit agreement between the Trumbull County Sheriff and the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association. That's OPBA Correction Corrections Officers effective upon execution through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Discussion. Credit where credits do, the sheriff's department did a great job negotiating this. It was. They took up, it's basically setting a good precedent for the rest of the unions that they're going to be dealing with down the road and it's going to result in some significant savings moving forward.
Reduction in overtime, sick and vacation conversion was cut.
Yes.
Or avoiding retroactivity, all those different things. Hats off to Clemens Nelson and our department. We're doing a great job. So thank you.
Those are standards that I'd like to, you know, I think that since we've, since I've been here, we've both been working on reducing some things and it's a, it's an ideal. Contract that it'd be nice to see some of those conversions rate rates across.
Agreed. Agreed.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
Yes.
Yeah, that concludes our regular agenda for today. Do we have any? Input or questions from the general public? Name and city, please.
Mister Glenn Niles. I'm here today to comment on events of this past week at the fine communities of Howland and Niles holding Fourth of July events. Especially the one in Howland. Miss Frenchco, I hate to single her out, but there was no scandalous or events that the other two board members. Put out there, but in, in the thing I'm talking about is one of the people that was on Miss Frenchco's team was wearing an American flag. Wearing it around their waist tied. Now we stand here and we say the pledge. She mentioned today that she has a military background, so she should know. That the American flag is the last thing that a loved one of a veteran gets when they're put in the ground and for her to see that in front of her. Is appalling to a veteran myself and I hope to other veterans, law enforcement, you do not wear an American flag. You can wear something with an American flag imprinted on it, but not an actual flag. And the pictures that she posted on her page, you can clearly tell that this flag has a margin, metal grommets, so it's an official flag. I find it appalling. It doesn't look good on the county and I don't care how it looks to her, but I just wanted to let everyone that has ever received the flag. To honor their service of their loved one should be pissed. Thank you.
I, I did see that on the internet, quite a few posts, quite a few texts to me regarding that. And I guess Commissioner, do you want to speak on that at all? Or not? She did wear it. I did notify you before the parade even that this doesn't look good. It's going to offend veterans and she still continued to lead the. Your. Entourage during the parade and walk through the parade after that. I just thought it went against all flag etiquette and official flag protocol.
He texted who? You sent someone a message or something?
It's you. You might probably have me blocked, but that's okay. But yeah, I thought it was, it did go against flag etiquette and protocol and. I know it wasn't you, but it was one of your team members and I, I heard a lot of grunts and growls and like I said, there was a lot of chatter about it, so.
Watch your people, especially another teaching moment, the little boy, what if she was going to break the sun, but I'm not that bad. You, are you disrespectful towards bad?
President?
What's that?
I'd, I'd request that the president controls the meeting.
He was, there was banner back and forth. Let's move on the next, next question. I was giving you a chance to reply to that to see if you wanted to make a comment regarding that being that it did happen with one of your people. If you wanted to own up to it, or if it affected any way of you received any feedback too. But if you want to make a comment, that's fine if you.
I haven't received any feedback and thank you for your concern.
Anybody else from the general public? For the good of Trumbull County? Okay, let's try the phone lines. If there are any callers. Hit star six.
Hello?
Go ahead. Name and city, please.
Patricia Wyatt, now Ohio. Um, a couple of weeks ago, Miss. Frenchco commented on how the county courthouse was kept. Since two thousand and ten, I believe, Trumbull County was taken away doing the front and there's a professional landscaping company that does the work. So when she was bashing the city of Warren, Trumbull County has not touched that for over since two thousand and ten.
Is there, is there a question or you making a statement? I don't understand.
I'm making a statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are, we're looking into the process also. We had another meeting with the recorder yesterday on who owns the. The rights there, what it is. We kind of looked at it and said, what, what did we need? Is there a reason? Is there a complaint? Is there? Without, I guess, having to expend the money on it. We don't want to just throw money at it to just do a title search unless we had to. And that kind of was.
I agree with you. I'm just letting you know who does the front of the courthouse. The county hasn't done it. Since probably two thousand and ten. A professional landscaping company comes in because the judges were set up the way it looked. So the county does not do the work. A professional company does.
Okay, thank you for the call. Okay, any other callers for the good of welfare of Trumbull County? It's star six, please.
Snacks?
No.
Pens, paper clips?
Okay, one comment I'd like to say is that it is fair week next week. We as a board do encourage the public. To come and see what we've done out at the fairgrounds over the last couple of months. I'm pretty proud of the votes that I've made and I'm sure the other commissioners are also. At the improvements we made as far as the parking areas, the roofs on some of the buildings, it's not all complete yet. But I think you will see a noticeable difference when you come in there. The fair board and the volunteers we have working the fair. Taking a lot of pride and showing it off to our county and showcasing what we have. The commissioners will have a booth. At the fair as, as well as the sheriff's department. The auditor will, will be in with the commissioners and some of our other department heads. Will be there throughout the week in the grandstand at our booth. We have an interactive fun booth. We put. A little time and effort into it this year with some things for the kids and handouts that are pertinent to seniors. Especially this year at the fair. So we ask you cool off under the grandstand and come and meet us and, and see what we have to offer here in Trumbull County. Also grab a tourism guide. Our tourism bureau has been working really hard.
The board, did you approve that?
Our, our tourism board has been working really hard to showcase what we have.
Okay.
The auditor wants to share a booth. I have no problem with it. I don't, or to be accessible. That's not an issue.
Would you have a question?
It sounded like you're making decisions on behalf of the board without including us. Not, neither of us heard that the commissioner's booth was being shared. We're all equal commissioners, even though you're president, you still need to, you know, discuss anything with, with the board. And.
We, we have had some discussion at public meetings where the.
I'm not opposed to the auditor. The more information, the better for the public. Whoever wants to be in.
And the other thing that I'd like to discuss publicly is whether or not the board of commissioners is going to violate our comp time policy and allow. Employees to obtain comp time while sitting at the fair. That's been a standard that's been going on for years since before I took office. I said I disagreed before with employees. Sitting there and walking around at the fair and receiving comp time because it says in our policy that it can only be earned while at the office. It doesn't say any type of remote location and also that's not necessarily part of a job description. So I don't think the taxpayers would be happy to know. That they're giving people. Compensatory time for.
Boys, I, I guess I'm new to this, but I, if, if need be, I'd like to make a motion that we do.
That you do? Why?
Well, as we did last week, you guys went against on the, on the judge's. Eight thousand dollar deal versus a seventy-five hundred. You decided to suspend. The policy and procedures on that and allow the judge to buy the vehicle for more than what the policy and procedures allowed administrative decision. I, I'd like to make a motion that we do allow employees within the commissioner's office to man the booth. And get comp time hours for that to meet the public, to serve the public and to serve the public in a good way where the public is going to be. We're going to come to them instead of them coming to us. I think it's a great opportunity and, and that's one time of year that we have allowed in the past. As I, as I researched, comp time has been allowed. It has been granted. It has been given in past years. And I'd like to make a motion that we do approve that again this year. For. Our staff to be able to do that.
I'll second it and I just want to, I just want to say, I'll second that. And I just want to say that our, this isn't a part of.
Compensation time, I. We don't. No, there is. If he has the floor, then we need to, if you could control the meeting and, and maybe ask someone who's disrupting the meeting to step outside or something. I know that the sheriff's department's quick to. Whenever I'm disrupting, but you know, we need to make sure that, that our, the rest of the body here who's from the public is behaving and being respectful as well. So.
I would just say, I would just say that the, our staff takes a great amount of time and diligence working the fair. That's not something that's in their job description.
You know what they do?
They do that regardless.
I've, I've been there.
Are you going to? So when you confer, you're going to do absolutely nothing to and collect a hundred thousand dollars.
I've.
Do nothing.
I've been there while Paula was there and she said she was manning the booth. I was there the entire time, the entire day. And there was no one there except for a chair and she said she must have been on a break going to eat and see the animals.
While you have.
We don't pay, we don't, we don't. It was the year before that and we don't, and we don't allow, we should not, we are guardians of the taxpayers' money. We should not have anyone receiving any type of perk or benefit for going to the fair.
That we shouldn't have happen, all the lawsuits in our office because one disgruntled person.
Unruly person in our office. So we have to build up morale. We have to treat our employees with respect. And one of the things that we do that is appreciating them. And when there's, when our fair, our fair, the Trumbull County Commissioners Fair is going on. They should be compensated, period. They're doing us a service. They're ambassadors for us at, at the fair. They're giving out information. They're answering questions. That's what happens.
Commissioner, I have the floor. Hold on, hold on.
List of how many people came by, it might've been five people. There's absolutely.
List of how many people came by, it might've been five people. There's absolutely no reason to substitute that with a suggestion box. Or comments or something like that and leave everything out there. And if anyone wants to stop by and volunteer stopping by, I know your cousin used to go out there when he was an employee and help with it, with the setup. We don't.
You're out of line with this stuff. When, while you have the floor, are there any other department heads? County employees or anyone else in the public you'd like to discredit or put down today? Because you've made your way around the county pretty good today. And I think there might be two or three people you left out that you have not offended yet. These are your citizens. These are your voters. These are people we serve.
Our voters.
Every single day. These are the people who pay our salaries.
Yes.
Every day.
And our voter, our voters deserved us to be guardians of their money.
Deserve respect from the commissioners and from the people up above and it bleeds on down to the morale of all staff, all the employees.
Guardians and stewards of.
We're putting Band-Aids on wounds that you cause every single day and I'm sick and tired of it. So by having a little good morale fairgrounds, you could say the fair.
This has been going on for years. It's not anything in response to me. You're just rubber stamping an old process that's been going on and it's.
Yes, and I want our department head there. I want our employees there. I want them to meet with the public.
Well, why don't you give all of them comp time then while you're at it? Why don't you just give every department head comp time so that they can all come out? I think this is absolutely absurd to give that out.
Can come out there as part of their daily duties.
As part of their daily. I hope you write about that.
If they are department head, they should meet with the public.
They should be out there as part of their daily duties.
They should hear the needs of the public. And I personally, and I hope Mr. Kenton Lee would back me on this. I would personally like to see every Trumbull County department head there at our next meeting on Wednesday. And I'd like to see him for the flag cutting because I think the public deserves that. The public deserves to see who is serving them and deserves to engage them one-on-one. And realize that the U P, these people you criticize every single day are good people that want to serve.
They can, they can go out when they're, they can go out when they're off work. Everyone, me included, everyone likes to go out and, and pet horses and see the animals. But they shouldn't be earning comp time to do so, period.
Don't think that's what they're doing.
That's what happens. I, I, I don't, I don't see there.
That's a lie. And, and you're.
No, it's not.
Blanket statements again.
No, it's not.
Characterize what's going on at the fair. I'm sure this is our fair. We need to, we need to embrace it. We need to value the people.
I was there all day. I was there all day.
Volunteers of the.
Every day.
The people.
The last year.
They want to see the employees that are out there promoting. We are all ambassadors.
They don't get, they should not be getting paid to do that. I don't think the fair board or any employee. I don't think the fair board or anyone in the community would, would be happy about us paying people just to.
I think they would be. Anything that's going to enhance the fair. I, I think the fair board would be extremely happy. They want to see success. They want to see profit. They want to see happy Trumbull County citizens. And right now, there's been doom and gloom for quite a few years as far as staff and morale. And my job up here is to make sure these people realize they are appreciated and they are.
Obviously, there's a fundamental difference of opinion. We can agree to disagree and we'll probably need to move on.
If you want to rain on the parade, rain on the fair, go ahead.
Oh, no.
Rest of the staff, the rest of the county.
Let's just put this out. Let's put this out there. The reason why a building was slated for demolition was because of the work and me and Mike Lloyd check, making sure that it got added to the list when the funding was announced. The reason.
But don't go see it public.
The reason.
Five people are going to be.
The reason. The reason the four, the four H building is actually getting done is because of the work that I, I actually did physically. Yes, absolutely. Because you, you came in and you rubber stamp everything that's before you, but I actually had to work because of my backgrounds in grants and writing and planning.
And architecture, and plumbing and carpeting and construction and voting.
Much more are you going to interrupt me and berate women?
I'm not berating women. I'm berating you for the way you treat the public and for the words that come out of your mouth. I am berating another commissioner, not a woman, not. It has nothing to do with your sex, has none to do.
Actually violating your gag order right now. I hope our legal counsel contacts you for violating a gag order for acknowledging that you're just here to be rape made that completely, go back and read your gag order.
Has nothing to do.
What does that have to do with it?
Go read it because you just violated it.
Okay, I violated by, I'm not allowed to discredit you in public?
And actually, read it.
Okay, we'll see. I, I disagree. I highly disagree. I'm going to say.
So I, so I actually did and, and very would acknowledge us that the reason why that got, that was able to be approved by our attorney was because of me gathering.
You're the one bringing it up right now. If anyone's violating a gag order, it's you. You just did it in front of everybody. Why don't you tell the rest of it?
It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. Let's move on.
Hello?
Is this something different?
Hello?
Who, who do we have here?
Darlene Futa. She's worried about comp time. What about the thousands of dollars Trumbull County has paid for her flipping lawsuits and may continue?
Hey, thank you for your input.
Commissioner Fudas.
Are there any other?
Former.
From the public.
That's an administrative decision. I have no problem with it.
It's administrative. I said it. He seconded it in a public meeting to approve it. Do we need to vote on that more?
We can. That's fine.
Do we need to set a limit as far as the hours or anything up to anything? Okay. Then we approve. I made the motion to approve comp time for employees to go outside the work here in the county and receive comp time to. Work at the Trumbull County Commissioners Booth at the fair, meet with the public and Commissioner Kenton Lacy seconded it.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cantle Mesa.
Yes, and I would just say that this is a pittance compared to what we're paying in legal fees in Trumbull County. So if we want to have, if we want to have good morale, if we want to have dedicated employees, you have to treat them as such, period.
Ms. Frenchco. Ms. Frenchco for the vote.
Be. Because it's absolutely ridiculous to pay people to go to a fair in any way, shape or form.
They're working the fair.
No, they're, I, I've been there. Please don't interrupt. I'm so tired of. Men just like speaking up over me. It's totally, no, yeah, you guys are just speak over me all the time.
You run the show in the middle here like you think it's Jerry Springer Show and you're the host. This is a commission, a board of commissioners meeting. This isn't your personal TV show.
So because, so, so because it's not in their job description, I've been out, I've been out at the fair. I've watched them. I've watched what happens. I've seen people earning comp time and not. I, I've seen, I've, I'm aware of people earning comp time while they were there, but out walking around and seeing animals and, and eating. And there is actually no work to accomplish and we should be stewards of the taxpayer money, not people either ways to, to waste it. My vote is no.
So employees, she's making a press and employees are not allowed to have any fun if you work. More food.
No, you can after work.
And Debbie Tempco, please quit smiling back there because you're not allowed to enjoy your job as much as you do. Thank you.
After, after work is okay.
Alexandra.
To go and visit.
Alex, Stephen, Jency Bush in Resources. I signed up to work the fair after hours. So what I'm saying here is that a lot of these people that I know of signed up to work the fair after hours. So. Why wouldn't we compensate them to work after hours? I guess that's where I'm really confused here. I'm not asking to compensate them. You know, for, for work that they're not doing. We're going there. I'm going there on a Wednesday night and potentially a Friday night out of the good for this county because I want to meet the people. I, I want to be there. I'm not asking for a dime of comp time to be quite frank with you either.
Okay.
No, that's what I'm saying. I mean, now, now union people, now let's, we also have two, you, but we have two union people who are in your office who are working.
That's not part of their contract.
They're allowed for overtime.
Whoa, if you. You're an HR director and while I understand that you're new, you do need to make sure that the union contracts are strictly abided by because the, the board of commissioners and our county cannot give them anything outside.
It's a management right.
What the union.
That would fall under article one, which is a management right. If, if you're, if administration.
If the union is fine with it, we can.
Correct. So what I'm saying here is that I can only attest to, and I want to be fair. I'm working after hours at the fair. I'm doing that on my own time for, for this county. But I know Paula's working in the afternoon.
She's not working. Paula is not.
Not at all. Okay. When I looked at the list, it was all of our employees, this staff who, who dedicates themselves here eight-thirty to four-thirty, working after hours at the fair. I, I mean.
Really work. I, I know you have not been there before, but.
Someone has to stand there and handle the trial, answer the questions. We have games and other things planned that we've already, we're going to have a great booth, an interactive booth that we want to show off to everybody. And let them leave with a visitor guide. Let them leave with some senior services info. Let them leave with some Homestead Act things from the auditor's office.
Not necessary.
It is necessary. We're going to the public. We're going out to the public.
It's been.
Coming right to them.
I've been there. A few people feel.
You want to hide in a back room and do business? That's great. You meet one-on-one with the department heads in your office, in private, in the dark, in a, in a. Ninety-eight degree office. You can do that. We're going to go out to the public and we're going to be open and honest with the public and accessible. And we're going to showcase the great employees that we have. We're going to.
Their, the job description is actually being, there's nothing that's being done.
Every candidate includes being an ambassador for every employee out there.
There is a list of what the comments were or people who had any questions or comments. I think it was last year. There might've been about four people or three people a day. That's.
We were probably. And one was someone you knew.
Are we making this a political meeting?
No, not political. This, I'm, I'm talking about the position.
Oh.
Let's move on. Please.
Okay, anything else for the good of Trumbull County? We hope to see you at the fair. It's going to be a great time.
Anybody else?
Come on up and say hello.
Not make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Cantle Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.